For our second round during the budget hearing and we are back from lunch commissioners and we're going to open up with Park.
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I would like to make an announcement about a slight modification to this afternoon.
Okay.
We will start at one o'clock with General Services and then after General Services, we will have Parks and Recreation and then we'll roll into Juvenile Court, Superior Court, and wrap up with Technology Services.
Outstanding, outstanding. Director Hammer is on board. Come on up Director.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's always an envious position to come after lunch. So hopefully I won't put you to sleep here. All right, so as you know, General Services as a support services department, we have two divisions of facilities and fleet and we're going to be covering the fleet services today. Just real quick, the vision, mission, and values. What I do want to highlight there is in our mission, we are always tasked with balancing a high quality of service with the cost. And that's always a tightrope walk that we have to do, but we're, just keep in mind, General Services supports all of the other departments, so most of what we ask for is not for our department specifically, but we're asking for all the other different areas and all the other departments that present to you today. Next slide please. I'll try to go through this quickly. The successes, one of our great successes again has to do not necessarily for the fleet services, but with our support of other departments, we're able to add a second heavy vehicle pit. It does say construction is underway. We have completed that. We have to outfit the pit right now. So for fire trucks, typically you want to service those underneath. You don't want to raise those up. They're very heavy and that can be dangerous for staff, so we service those underneath with a long pit that extends the whole length of the truck. And we were able to add a second one, which essentially can double our capacity for repairs and having vehicles that we're working on. We also continue to train our staff on electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles. As you may be familiar with them, they, their structure is different, their engine is obviously very different, even the drivetrain is very different. So it's, it's not the same traditional vehicle. For instance, the, a lot of them, the wheels themselves, each of the four wheels has its own drive motor, which is very different than a conventional vehicle. So we have to continue to train on those and make sure that our staff is up to date as we move to the future and as we have more electric vehicles on the road. And last but not least, the challenges, if we all remember the chip shortage a year or so back, that's, those type of challenges in supplies and supply and demand chain create backups. For instance, with the, all of the major manufacturers, Ford, Dodge, and Chevrolet, if we were to order a piece of equipment right now, it would be 12 to 16 months before we would actually take possession of it, which obviously pushes us to have long-term planning, which we do, but it also makes it difficult to have a high turnaround, especially if we have damaged our vehicles that reach the end of their life cycle. And that is one of the reasons as the board is very familiar with, that we implemented the Enterprise Fleet Lease Replacement Program. Next slide please. Our goals and initiatives, this is tied to the strategic plan, the reimagined Rockdale. We have two that affect us in particular, and that's to continue the fleet replacement plan. We'll be going into year three. We started this at the end of 2022, going into 2023. First full year was 2023 and 2024 is the, is the second year we'll be entering in the third full year of this plan. And our, our, our projection is to impact 38 vehicles total, which is 24 for various departments, and then Rockdale Water Resources and Stormwater. So we're pleased not only to be having all the, the BOC departments, but also be bringing on the enterprise funds as well in the program. And then of course, the electric vehicle feasibility study. We, we started a pilot program and the reason this is important is because electric vehicles change very, very, very dramatically and very quickly. Just to give you one example, the Chevrolet earlier this year announced they were no longer supporting the Chevy Bolt electric vehicle. And then about three weeks later, they reversed their decision and they are doing those again. So as markets change, as technology changes, this is one of those that's sometimes not just on the cutting edge, but on the bleeding edge. And for county to be a good resources of taxpayer dollars, we want to ease into that one and not rush in to make sure we have the infrastructure, we have the training, we can support it, we have the maintenance and so on. So that's part of our program. Next slide please. So this is the budget summary. This is provided by finance and so as you can see, this is the fiscal year 2024 budget and then the proposed budget. And I'll get into some of the items there. The total operating expenses, we'll cover those in just a second, and then the personnel services. Next slide please. Okay, as, as far as the operating budget request, we do have sort of grouping and we try to group those as much as we can on here that makes sense. The first line item that we have travel and training. And again, this kind of goes back to what I said, the, the electric vehicle training is part of that, as well as the emergency vehicle training. When we've added the second heavy vehicle pit, keep in mind, we have one technician at the moment who is fully emergency vehicle certified, EVT training. He's gone through eight different courses on that. It's an extensive program that takes over a year to complete. And we have, we have one that is fully completed and we're having another one to enter into the program as well. So this would cover the cost of that training as well as any travel that it needs, the training, because it's a specialty training and they do this all over the country, they only have them at certain times. We always pick the ones that are the closest to Rockdale, but not all of them are in Atlanta. Most of them are not available in Georgia. A lot of them are in Florida and some other places. So this would cover the travel for that as well. And then the electric vehicle training, we are able to do some of that in-house. Ford has some training modules that we attend. We even had them come out and did a training at our fleet shop to go over how to maintain certain vehicles. So that was, that was a good program. So that, this accounts for the first line. The second line, the increase in CINTAS, inflation costs in shop supplies and the fleet repair software. One of those is a cleanup item. We had the repair software, we've been using it for years, but it was in a different line item, so we pushed it over into this one. The rest of that is just simply increases from CINTAS and uniforms, as well as just inflation and increase in, in supplies that we've been faced with purchasing. The next one is similar to that and that's probably our largest or second largest item on this list, an increase for 2025, and that is inflation cost. So like I said at the beginning, we don't use that line item for fleet services itself. This is for the purchase of the materials, parts, and even shipping for an increase for all of the different county vehicles, all of the 600 or so vehicles that the county owns, including for the sheriff's office, fire, and this also includes heavy equipment, dump trucks, trailers, lawn mowers, anything that, that has an engine and wheels we man, we manage. We're projecting an increase for 2025 based on what we know we're tracking so far this year. The small equipment, this again goes back to the heavy vehicle pit. We've added the pit so that we can service this. There's a lot more heavy vehicles. I think Fire made a presentation and they're looking as the population increases, their calls increase, their demand for vehicles increases, and it's fleet's job to keep them up and running and on the road. A fire engine, a 500,000, 700, $1 million engine that is sitting in the shop for weeks or, or even days is not out there on calls. And so this is to outfit that new pit, that would be for the reels, the hydraulics, the, the oil change, tire change machines, all those type of different things. And last but not least. Last but not least, the, the largest item on here is relatively new. It's, it's more of a financial category one. As we have gone through the vehicles and purchased them for the Enterprise Fleet Replacement Plan, the capital cost of the vehicle itself, for the asset, is, is paid for out of the host, out of the capital fund, but the interest and the fees and any shipping and titles and things like that that are related to those can't be paid out of the capital fund. So they have to land somewhere and this is where they go. And as we have progressed with additional vehicles, that, that cost has gone up. Two reasons for the lower one on 2024 and jumping is that was an allotment miscalculation or error. It should have been $12,000 a month for the vehicles and it was, it was put in there just as $12,000 total. So we are tracking at roughly $144,000 for this year as far as the, the interest and the fees and all the related items on that. So it will increase because this year we have purchased an additional grouping of vehicles. I think we're up to 50 so far this year and of course, that will increase that number as well. Next slide please. The current organizational chart is there. Currently, we don't have any vacancies. Next slide please. What we did ask for next year, as we have an increase in those vehicles, as we transition our fleet from purchased vehicles that are 10, 15, 20, 25 years old and, and 200,000 miles, we're, we're trying to get to where the age of our fleet is five years or less. One of the things that, that has produced is a whole lot more paperwork for our administrative staff. And so we're asking for administrative clerk, if you take 600 vehicles roughly and divide them and we're replacing them, one-fifth every year, it's 120 vehicles a year, so that's 120 titles, 120 contracts, and so on. So there's a lot of administrative.
And Director, who's currently doing that task now?
It's split right at the moment between the deputy director and the administrative operations coordinator. And they have their hands full. It's so far, we've only replaced 20 and they were, they, they were able to manage to do that and then we added another 50, I think we're up to 90 now. And as we continue to do that, it becomes a very large burden on that. So that's what we're asking for. The second highlighted on there is a fleet services mechanic four. The four designation is specifically for the emergency vehicle training that they go through for the fire engines. And that's a, like I said, there's eight different categories from electronics to hydraulics to onboard equipment. And, and it's a specialty and, but what it does by having that in-house, it can save us a tremendous amount of money by having to outsource that to shops that can provide that, that involves, I was going to say shipping, but transfer of the vehicles there and back, as well as able to stock parts in-house and be able to repair those in-house rather than outsourcing those. Next slide please. The budget impact on that for those two positions is shown above, the fleet services mechanic four, and then the administrative clerk. And it's just the two positions. Next slide please.
So I want to, you talked about the fleet services mechanic. You, you did point out that specifically it would be for the public safety vehicles, i.e. the fire apparatus.
Correct, yes sir.
What do you currently do in that space when those fire engines or fire trucks come in in terms of servicing them properly and getting them back out so they can get back to the fire stations?
Right, right at the moment, we have three staff in the truck shop, so they handle every piece of heavy equipment in the entire county. So what we do if we have a fire engine that comes in and it needs repair and it's, we, we have the one lane with the pit and we maintain those. We also do preventative maintenance items such as changing tires and oil changes and things like that, that you wouldn't on a normal engine, so they would put those in there. If we get a second one in and we're close enough to finishing the repair on the first one that we know we'll get to it in say like a day or so, we'll, we'll just put that on hold or now we can, we can pull that into the second vehicle pit. If we get to three engines or even two engines where it, you know, one repair is going to go on for several days or a week or more, we immediately contact one of our outsourcing vendors, find out which one has the availability and have the truck either driven to that one or.
And all the while, you're communicating with the fire chief.
That's correct.
Because that's a different potential problem for her and the fire department out in the community, because if really one, Lord forbid, two engines or fire trucks are in the service bay at the same time, then there's a potential that we may have to suspend operations at a fire station if we don't have adequate equipment to be able to run, or they may have to double up their operations to service the county in the event of an emergency or major massive fire. How, tell us about that. I'm really wanting you to paint the picture because I think this is the part again, that the, the average citizen, they couldn't know, they wouldn't know.
Right.
You know, they don't know the backdrop behind the, the complete operations of how one department supports the other. And here, in this instance, it's fleet services with the fire operation.
Right. I mean, I don't have the exact numbers for all the stations of course, but typically the fire department likes to have one engine and then a reserve at each station, or at least dedicated at each station, and then the ladders and the quints come into there as well, are strategically placed around the county. But that's, that's entirely correct. So if there is especially one of the specialty vehicles, the hazmat truck or the brush truck or, or one of the ladders has any type of issues with that and that ladder is down, it used to be we only had one ladder in the county. And so when that ladder was down, that meant any structure fire that was over a certain height, it was very difficult for them to suppress. So we, we work very closely with the fire department. We give them weekly updates. We have a, we have a ongoing communication that we use. They have a work order system that ties into our work order system, so we're able to see exactly what vehicles they have, what engines are down. And worst case, if we do have a multiple number of engines, we escalate that and I'm, I'm sure the fire department has a mutual aid agreements with other counties, but again, that's a lot longer to drive and, and we need to keep them back on the road as quickly as possible.
So essentially, what I was moving towards, first of all, thank you Director, because I think again, people need to know and understand a lot of the backdrop of what they don't see on the surface moving through the community on a day-to-day basis. Your request for this particular mechanic will again reduce, in some cases even completely alleviate, having to use an outside contractor. That outside contractor, from a time standpoint of keeping a fire engine or apparatus of any type up and running and be able to do a quick turnaround when an engine is out of service or there's an issue with one of those vehicles, we can get them, by having our own specialized mechanic, we can get those vehicles back on the road, back to the fire stations where they need to be, so they can respond to calls and requests for services. Is that correct?
That is entirely correct, yes sir. Not only the repair time itself, but the travel back and forth is saved tremendously. If it's a day there and a day back, you've already lost two days and you haven't even worked on it.
I'd be interested in how much money we've dedicated to contract services in this regard versus what this will do if we had it in-house, if we had our own person in-house. And then the other plus to that is, you know, Rockdale County, just like other citizen counties, we all are in a mutual aid agreement to support each other. In fact, I think we just supported DeKalb County just a couple of nights ago. And that's all fine and good, well and dandy, but it's God bless the child that has his own. I think it's nothing like us having our own in-house service specialized mechanic to be able to keep our equipment up and running. So in a critical need, it's good to know that Newton is on the way, or Walton is on the way, or Henry or DeKalb is on the way, but if that on the way is still a good bit of miles away and got to navigate through traffic versus being in Rockdale, time equals lives.
Yes sir.
So I hope all who are listening and watching and commissioners, you, you hear where we're going with this, I think is, and of course, we already know this, but still I think it's important that the public is aware, here he is asking for a specialized mechanic to keep our apparatus up and going. This is not just an ask, this is for a major piece of equipment that we've made a major investment in and it helped save lives and property in the county by keeping these vehicles up and running. And then I also will add that continuous maintenance and repair to be preventive maintenance, that's what I really wanted to say, can help keep those vehicles out of the shop from a critical situation, because now we've got somebody who can specialize in monitoring and maintaining those vehicles and making sure that they're not coming in with something that we should have called, or we could have called had we had a specialized mechanic like this.
Oh absolutely. I mean, just as a, a simple example, if the truck has bald tires on it, that's an incredibly heavy vehicle, so if it's not able to stop or if it does get in an accident or something and we're not doing the preventative maintenance on it, that causes much more damage and then the truck is out of service, as opposed to getting it in, getting it to shop, swapping the tires and moving back and getting it back in service.
And for the person who's thinking a long time ago state of mind, firefighters are not mechanics.
Yes sir.
They're firefighters. In fact, they're now EMTs and firefighters. They're folks who are specialized with saving lives, extinguishing fires, and applying medical services until the ambulance can get there. And they're not mechanics, that's not what we're hiring them to do. So I wanted to make sure I clear that up because.
Yes sir.
There was once upon a time that firefighters did count a little bit of everything to maintain the vehicles and all that kind of stuff, but that's not the day we're in. And plus, the workforce of today don't even lend itself to that. You can hardly get a, I'll stop right there, but go ahead.
That's correct, yes sir. And fleet services maintains all of the vehicles, like I said, and all of the fire engines as well, so, okay. So the, if we're moving on to the capital improvement plan, we really only have two main line items on here, the automotive equipment, and all of this is for the fleece, the fleet enterprise replacement program. And again, this is the, the annual cost as we ramp up to the full replacement and then it'll plateau after year five and then we'll, as we start swapping the vehicles from the lease and selling them back at a much higher rate. Again, instead of selling a vehicle that's 20 years old with 250,000 miles and maybe getting a salvage cost of a few hundred dollars for it, we're able to take a vehicle that might only have 30, 40, 50,000 miles and sell it at a much higher rate, 10, 15, $20,000 back. So that's what that first line represents. The second line of everything I've talked about today, this actually is for fleet equipment itself. There's a few items that, that we have to replace, the, the fuel pump systems are, have reached the end of their life cycle. We've been milking those along and repairing those and they're still functional, but the longer we go, the more difficult it is to upgrade those. So that's one of the items in there. And then the remaining items are for the tire changers. And again, in an effort to keep the vehicles back on the road and running, there's four, we have four lifts in our, in our car shop and we have one in the, in the truck shop, not for fire engines, but for other smaller equipment. And all of those are, when they reach the end of their life cycle, the hydraulics start to fail, they start to leak, they have issues with them, you know, the mechanics and the electrical. So all of them are reaching the end of their life cycle and we're trying to replace one of those each year so that we can stagger the cost over the next five years, but still have equipment that is safe to operate it on and doesn't put our staff at risk. Next slide please, I think that's, and I think that's it.
Commissioner Washington, any questions for the Director?
Absolutely not.
Commissioner Williams?
Cleared.
I'll give Director Hammer a round of applause. Thank you so much Director. And a big shout out to folks over in fleet services who keep our, all of our vehicles up and running, all of them, not just public safety, but every vehicle that we have on the road, they keep them up and running. We certainly do appreciate those, that's the team that we don't see a lot, but they're certainly there to make sure the fleet is moving. Thank you. Who's up next?
We've got Parks and Recreation next.
Oh, they got the whole house in the house.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Director Redman.
Good afternoon, Chairman.
Yes sir.
Give you guys a second to flip. Let me know when you guys are ready to go.
I believe we're ready.
Ready?
Yes sir.
All right, good afternoon again. My name is Jason Redman, I am the Director for Parks and Recreation here in Rockdale County and I will be going over my 2025 proposed budget and my 2025 through 2029 capital improvement plan today. Before I get started, I do want to take a, a moment to say to the board, thank you very much for your always unwavering support of Parks and Recreation. And just being able to have a board that is supportive of the initiatives that we have in Parks and Recreation is, is very important. I've said to you all many times before, I know other peers and other counties and, you know, that's not so much the story, but you all have always been very supportive of us and I really appreciate it.
Yes sir.
All right. I'll start off with the vision, mission, and values. The vision for Parks and Recreation is to create a vibrant, growing community where a high quality of life is supported by robust commercial growth and an educated workforce. The mission, which we have two of because Senior Services has a separate mission. Parks and Recreation strives to promote relevant and diverse family arts and cultural programming while improving our park facilities through upgrades and amenities that attract new and existing citizens, businesses, and tourism. The Senior Service Division strives to enhance the quality of life for our senior citizens. With a dedication, with dedication to serving elderly residents, we work to identify, develop, implement, and coordinate diverse programs and services to address senior citizens' needs. Our values are conservation, health and wellness, and social equity. Through conservation, we want to protect open spaces, connecting children to nature, and engaging communities in conservation practices through our health and wellness value. We want to continue to lead the county to improve health and wellness through some of our Parks and Recreation initiatives. And with our social equity, we want to ensure all people have access to the benefits of local Parks and Recreation. Next slide. Some of the opportunities and challenges that we have in Parks and Recreation, our successes, I've always liked to talk about these successes. The, um, the pickleball and Sand Beach volleyball courts have been installed at Willa Park. We've successfully installed new registration software, Amelia Smart Rec. We were current, we were previously used. We've successfully installed new registration software, Amelia Smart Rec. Uh, we were current, we were previously using Rec One. Uh, that program and system has become uh quite antiquated and uh had less functionality, so we made an um, a decision to upgrade the software. Uh, we have received multiple grants, including the Heart Grant, uh Food Liquid Supplements for At-Risk Seniors, Atlanta Hawks, Foundation for Sports Clinic, the BOOSS, which stands for Building Out of School Time for summer camp programming, GRPA for international, intergenerational program for arts for the ages. Our seventeen U boys won the basketball state title this year. We hosted the District Six Class A playoffs this year for the second year in a row for ages fourteen and seventeen U. We also won the uh GRPA Athletic Aquatics Network Outstanding Program for Hoops After Dark. And with that, I brought this this morning, I do check my mail at work. I check it everywhere. So this morning, delivered to me was Recreation and Parks and, Recreation and Parks in Georgia. And in the middle is a big article about our Hoops After Dark program, so. Just, it's it's just a testament to the work that we've put in as a team to uh, to get our programs out in the state of Georgia and and be known in the state of Georgia. Uh, the um, we have completed one hundred and six opera projects through Senior Services, which is a big deal. That program is designed to help seniors in their times of need. Um, we've also expanded the Veteran Transportation Program to serve twelve VA sites after initially starting with four sites. So again, another big deal for the seniors in the community. Some of the opportunities that we have, which we've really taken advantage of, what I would like to talk about is the um, the engagement of community and and volunteerism in Parks and Recreation. Uh, we have different art, different volunteers from different walks of life, uh whether it be youth in the summertime who are in that, that, that funny stage where they're too old for summer camp and too young to get a job. Uh, adults come in, uh, we even have people that have to do community service. And we, we take all, you know, all customers who who want to come in and volunteer, even if it's mandated. Uh, we make sure that they have something to do where they can give back to their community. Um, uh efficient use of resources, uh shared services and new initiatives. Uh, increasing the market of the department through partnerships with PTA schools, committees, and local service organizations, as well as uh Metro Atlanta. Uh, I received a message on on Facebook, and I normally don't respond to messages, the other day, about one of our billboards. And they wanted to know, where was it located, and how much did it cost the citizens? And I responded, it is free because of the partnerships that we built in Metro Atlanta. One was downtown on I seventy-five, eighty-five connector, one was in McDonough, and one was in Clayton County. So we have a chance to market our beautiful community and other places just from building partners, partnerships and and establishing relationships.
That, and that marketing paid off in a big way this past Sunday, because uh your staff reported that folks came from Peachtree City. I got a call from the Chairwoman of Gwinnett County, she was in attendance. There were folks out of Social Circle, Madison, that came up to be a part. And I think the number that your staff said was somewhere between twenty-five hundred to three thousand attendees
That is correct.
On Sunday, you know, that in itself, I I I ca- and I mentioned this on Tuesday, the impact of arts, culture, and entertainment that it has on economic development. Oftentimes, people are so quick to talk and speak, and they don't really know, do the homework first, do your research first before you just blab and blurt and go, go, go forward. So check out what it is you're talking about. There's nothing unusual driving down any one of the interstates. Seventy-five, eighty-five, twenty, four hundred, and you see marketing from other municipalities and counties. One of the biggest marketings that's happening right now is for law enforcement officers from various communities. Uh, I saw uh the state of Tennessee was marketing in Macon, Georgia for law enforcement officers. Uh, down uh somewhere between uh, I think it's uh Madison and Rutledge, there's a billboard right now for uh officers in Cobb County. It's right now on I twenty, uh east I twenty. So it's nothing unusual to see that. If you're traveling seventy-five, you'll always see, and and I give a big shout out to uh the city of McDonald. They've got about seven or eight billboards all over seventy-five that takes you just about uh to the split off between uh Valdosta and Savannah, uh marketing uh McDonald. It's, and they've been doing it for years.
Yes, they have.
The regional stretch of promoting a community is, when Commissioner Washington, this is your lane, when we talk about economic development, it can never be limited to the geographical location of your own backyard. It has to be far-reaching, because you just never know, and you can't take for granted. That's the whole basis of Splosh. People who coming into our community and stopping to get gas or buy anything, they are contributing to the Splosh dollars here in Rockdale County. So marketing is important. And I think we've got to uh up-level our thinking in order to be able to understand uh the far reach. But the backdrop of what you just said, it didn't cost us anything. You took advantage of the relationship. So tell us how we came about that, Director?
Uh, just from former relationships with Eletra, uh Metro Atlanta, uh partners, businessmen, uh inviting people out. We've had several visitors this past, over the past two years to just come see what we're doing here in Rockdale County, Parks and Recreation, just from looking on the website or seeing us in a publication. They're, they're interested to mimic or, you know, recreate what we're doing in their community. So just building those partnerships, shaking the right hands, and making those connections, Chairman.
Often duplicated, never imitated.
Yes, sir.
Often imitated, never duplicated. How about that?
Yeah.
The, the movie industry, the film and movie industry, that does all the movies out at Rockdale, out at Costly Mill. Uh, that's another way of the word getting out.
Yes.
So I, you know, listen, uh, keep up the good work, uh, keep snatching those uh free deals or those deals that continue to promote us throughout the region.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Sir. Continuing with opportunities, uh, expanding the Veteran Transportation Program. Uh, Senior Services uh has done a great job with this program, and we want to continue to expand it. And to your point, Chairman, we have been selected to speak this year at GRPA for our Arts of the Ages grant that we just, uh, event that we put on through the grant we received, and about the Veteran Transportation Program. So again, other communities want to see how we're doing this, because they want to implement it in their backyard, so.
Who in the world is GRPA?
Georgia Recreation Parks Association. I neglected to say what that was. Thank you, Chairman.
I knew that, I just wanted to make sure that we keep teaching and educating.
Keeping me on my toes.
Absolutely.
We also, uh, for opportunity, want to uh implement new programming to target dementia in the community. I know Deputy Director Morgan has been working very closely with Commissioner Williams on this initiative. And uh, and then creating a new partnership to provide kinship care services using leverage funds. Kinship Care is the program that, where you have grandparents raising grandchildren. So again, just being a resource for the community. Some of the challenges, and I'll just touch on a couple. The major ones that we can't control, inflation and natural disasters and weather. So again, we always making sure we're doing our homework, we're always in touch with EMA, um, always paying attention to the trends as they're coming along to make sure that we're able to adjust while we're moving.
And by the way, you talked about natural disasters. How's that new roof working out over at the senior center? We had it replaced.
Working great.
Susan got a thumbs up over there.
Deputy Morgan is loving it. All right, next slide. FY twenty-five goes in initiatives, the Department's Reimagining Rockdale Strategic Plan. For access, again, we want to continue to develop the trail from the monastery to Johnson Park. That's going to be a great amenity to the community. Our expanded walking trail at Costly Mill. We have a new initiative coming out called Rec and Crew. I have to say it slow, my southern twang sometimes run that together, they think I'm gonna knock something down. But we're gonna add to the community through Rec and Crew. This is a mobile recreation van that we have that will go to the communities where transportation may become, may be an issue for some of the youth. Um, some of the desert communities that we have that are further south of Rockdale, further north of Rockdale. All of them are not able to get on the trail, to get to the trail, to get to anything, to get to Johnson Park, to get to Willa Park. So we want to take the recreation to them. So that initiative will be rolling out in twenty twenty-five. Uh, also expand the veteran accessibility through marketing and program offers, offerings to increase outreach to elderly and low-income veterans. As far as the equity is concerned, we want to create a sustainable post-opera assistance program for seniors for utilities and home repair. Opera stands for American Rescue Plan Act. Um, we also want to attract tourism with additional programming at Costly Mill Park. Increase the partnerships that we've developed uh in order to host multiple athletic tournaments. Again, and that uh goes to what you said, Chairman, about, you know, when you host these tournaments, people got to come in and eat gas, they got to have hotels, they got to eat, so. It's uh economic development, yes, sir.
Let me real quick go back to what you said, first on the equity, that create a sustainable and post-opera assistance program for seniors for utilities, home repair. I know that Deputy Director Morgan receives a, a good number of calls from seniors who who are on a fixed income, and they have different things going on in and around their homes. And they don't have the disposable cash to be able to uh address those issues. She has certainly, through what the work they do with Senior Services, been a big lifesaver to point folks to resources.
Yes.
Uh, to make sure that they can get the help that they need. And we are a community, because our office, Ms. Lee, in the office of the Chairman, receive a number of those calls uh quite often. Folks are at kind of wits end, not knowing what to do. And of course, we ca- we called Deputy Director Morgan. Uh, she has a uh world of resources, and she's able to um, where we can help. Well, sometimes we're in some situations, we can't do anything about it. But this is a big plus, uh, to know that we even have that, and that we can, we have team on board that can point people in the right direction in their time of need. So that's, that's a big deal.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make, because we are doing things uh to help and assist people where we can. Uh, some of it is beyond our reach for, for multiple reasons.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
For innovation, uh, continue to work with the therapeutic recreation arm that we have in Parks and Recreation to offer additional opportunities for clients to participate in various programming. A lot of, we do a lot of inclusive programming, especially evening, uh, some of the evening programs that we have. Uh, establish a memory cafe and programs to support community members dealing with dementia, and complete amenities for the lawn at Willa Park. Next slide, please. Here is the budget summary uh for Parks and Recreation. For uh FY twenty twenty-four, the uh budget impact was four point four million dollars. The proposed FY twenty-five, FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five budget impact would be six point five million, million dollars with a change of uh two million dollars, uh, two million dollars. Next slide. For Senior Services, the FY twenty twenty-four was one point five million. The proposed for FY twenty twenty-five is one point eight million with a three hundred and three dollars, seventy, seven hundred seventy-two dollar change. Next slide. Operational requests, which is broken down by function, uh as you're looking at sixty-one, ten, sixty-one, twenty, uh and so on. As cultural recreation, participant recreation, the tennis center, Costly Mill, and park maintenance, the total estimate, estimated budget impact is seven hundred forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Next slide.
So I have a question about that.
Yes.
So with the increase in each of those categories.
Yes.
Is that because of inflation, or is that because of in- increased services? Or what, what makes up that increase?
Great question. I'm going to go into detail on slide number, I think, nine on it, but I'll answer some of it. Some of it is inflation, most of it is inflation, to be honest with you. Um, and then some of it is program increases, and as you can see on slide nine, um, is the, the, for cultural recreation, it's just simply uh, the contract labor costs have gone up. What we pay people to come and perform, or to come and do work, or to come and do anything, their prices have gone up, so we have to pay them more money. So we have to increase that line item in the budget. Uh, same thing with participant recreation, uh, the uh facility. Uh, we have some things at a Jo- at Johnson Park that are original to the building, and you talk about nineteen ninety-four. I know last year, I don't know if you all remember, I came before you for an emergency request because the, the, the broil, the broiler went out, the water heater. So people were taking cold showers, and that was the original water heater since nineteen ninety-four. So again, us trying to, to, to bring everything current, uh along with the increase of how much everything costs now, will, will cause a budget increase. For the tennis center, it's the same thing, contract labor. What's included in contract labor is the resurfacing of the tennis courts. Uh, and I know I've had this conversation with you all as well. Uh, when I first came in twenty seventeen, all the tennis courts needed to be done, so we developed a rotating schedule to do four at a time to try to minimize just a, a, a hard budget impact every year. So we do four at a time, so we keep them on a rotating basis. And I want to say the resurfacing this year, I think, went up twenty percent. Uh, just for them to put the uh, the armor crack on to, to seal the cracks. The tennis courts develop cracks over time because of the weather and the pounding on them. So that has gone up as well. The uh, and also the tennis center is a seven-day-a-week operation. Um, Costly Mill has been due to um increased marketing focus and cleaning services, and the repair and maintenance items and repairs. And the same thing with park maintenance. And, and I know someone may say, well, fuel and service, you know, we get fuel from Fleet. Yes, but they're charging us their fuel costs to come out. For example, the um, the taught, the, the, the board at Costly Mill, the message board, if it breaks, it's, I want to say it's like some sick number, like six hundred dollars for somebody to come from Douglasville just to look at it. That's not the repair, just, that's just the service call fee. So everything has gone up tremendously.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, so we're going back to, are we just going to continue through operational request justification for Senior Services? Again, agent equipment and some of the vehicles um that we have at Senior Center. For the education and training, we want to make sure that our, our uh team members are currently receiving professional development. The contract labor, uh, in this, we have included respite care and personal care. Transferred expense from uh fifty-two, thirty-nine hundred, and kinship care added. Respite and personal care is if you have a person who is a um caregiver of their uh senior loved one, that they're able to bring them to the senior center during, during the course of the day, to give them some type of reprieve from, from the round-the-clock care of that person. So that has been added as well. Um, purchase services, um, it's a reduction in line item. The program costs moved to contract labor, so we added assistance for seniors. And then replacing the furniture, kitchen, commercial pots and pans, AED safety equipment and refrigerator. And let me just um, support that about the pots and pans by saying, everything that's eaten in the senior services is freshly cooked. It's no packaged food for the, for the members that come there every day, day in, day out. Uh, Ms. Jackie comes in early to prep, to cook, and it's not just a bulk machine, she actually takes her time and puts eleven care in it. So we have to make sure we're keeping up with those.
Well, I'm glad you said that. I'm sure folks don't know that, that's, and that's, that's really important.
Okay, next slide. Here, you see the current organizational chart. Um, it is just an overview of uh Director, the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation Operations, Deputy Director of Senior Services, and the Division Manager of Costly Mill. Uh, a- and as I said before in the other slides, you saw everything broken down in function. So we have, thanks to uh Executive Director Holmes correcting me last time, a hundred and three people in Parks and Recreation. I remember that number. And so the uh org chart is broken down in the, the following slide. So next slide. For sixty-one, twenty, this is what it looks like. And I'll bring your attention to the left of the screen where you see a, a, a host of lifeguards. And I know sometimes, you know, we get into what's essential, what's not essential. At the end of the day, everything we do is essential because we're serving the community, and we have to follow the guidelines. So for lifeguards, we have to make sure that we maintain a certain ratio in that water for safety concerns. We are governed by American Red Cross. So in order for us to be in compliance with them, we have, we must make sure that we, we have the correct ratio and number.
Um, and then that's for you, uh, uh, are you talking about your lifeguards out at Johnson, or the ones at Costly?
So both. So for, for Costly, we have summer positions that we hire in the summer to increase the number of lifeguards, because we add additional programming in the summer um through May through September roughly. So um, we have, these lifeguards, what you're looking at is for Johnson. And because we, we open six days a week, and the swim lessons, and the free swim, and it's a lot, as well as these these lifeguards are responsible for going to the splash pad too, as well. So, and, and monitoring black shows as well, because it's water.
Okay, got you. So, see, all right, that's a clear understanding there. So when Costly Mill, the swim area, the water out at Costly wraps up in September, is that right? There's no longer any swimming come September?
Yes, sir.
After Labor Day?
After Labor Day.
Okay. So those lifeguards who are stationed out there, where do they go? Are they just seasonal?
That's a great question. They are seasonal. Those lifeguards are seasonal that we hired for the summer.
That pretty much wraps up their time for this calendar year until the next season.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you, you have lifeguards that are on staff, I think you said, that are still on?
Year-round.
Year-round, and they go out to?
They, they monitor Johnson Park, black shows, and they see the splash pad when it's open as well.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't think about the black shows part of it, but that's.
Yeah, we, we make sure, yeah, you got people in boats, so we, we do safety rounds, safety checks, make sure that everything is good.
Okay.
Yes, sir. The tennis center, which is uh, uh sixty-one, thirty-seven, you see the Director, Deputy Director, Tennis Center Manager, Senior Tennis Center Coordinator, and the Tennis Center Coordinator. No personnel changes were requested for this area. Next slide. Costly Mill, uh Director, Division Manager.
Wait a minute, uh Director, uh, let's go back to that last, the tennis center. Wait a minute, uh, director, uh, let's go back to that last, the tennis center sixty one thirty seven.
Okay.
Because what I don't want to do is confuse anybody.
Okay.
I, I know the reason you have the director and the deputy director listed on there.
Okay.
But there is not a deputy director and a director for the tennis center.
Correct. Every time you see the word director, it'd just be referring to me and all the slides that you see.
Clear that up.
And I understand why you said that.
Someone just looking at the screen could think, wow, they got a director and a deputy director for the tennis center itself and that's not the case. I clearly want, but if we don't slow it down and educate and explain some of this, people will take it the wrong way. They could say, no, the tennis center, they got a director or a deputy director over there. That is not the case.
You're correct.
You're connecting the folks who run that center to the other folks who are responsible for overall management of parks and recreation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we, we gotta say that. We gotta, we have to teach and explain as we go.
Correct. You are correct. So again, as the chairman just said, anytime you see the word director, it would refer to me, myself only. The deputy director that you see here is Deputy Director Wilson, who is over Parks and Recreation Operations. So next slide. So here, again, Costly Mill director would be myself, the Costly Mill Division Manager is, is over Costly Mill. And they oversee the day to day operations at Costly Mill, dealing with financial, uh, rentals, bookings and maintenance of the park. Uh, here, the personnel changes requested are four event recreation coordinators, one event. One recreation operations supervisor and one cultural arts operation manager. Next slide. Here you see sixty two hundred, which is park maintenance. Again, the director listed is myself. The deputy director listed is Deputy Wilson, again, because this falls under Parks and Recreation Operations. Uh, there are no personnel changes requested for this group as well.
What is the role of a parks manager, director?
The parks manager is to make sure that the day to day operations are met as it relates to the grounds and small business, small building repair. Uh, so, and I'm glad you said that. Someone said to me the other day that, you know, when I think of the county, I think of you guys, because I always see your areas. And I, and I just said that to my park maintenance team this morning, meeting with them. The first thing that someone sees is the grass and how well the grounds are kept. So they are responsible for that. They do a great job. It is, I want to say a total of fifteen parks and recreation, um, maintenance workers. And, you know, they work in the elements and, you know, even when it's raining, they're still outside and most seasons is ve- mowing season is very hectic. Because of the amount of green space that we have to cover. So that's what they're responsible for. Next slide. Here you have senior services, the director listed is myself. The deputy director listed here is Deputy Director Morgan, who oversees the senior, senior center. And there are no personnel changes for this area as well. Next slide. So personnel requests, based upon the ones that we just viewed on the org chart. The total budget impact is three hundred sixty three thousand, three hundred twenty eight dollars and fourteen cents. Next slide. The request justification is, is as listed for the Arts and Culture Operations Manager. Arts and Culture has grown tremendously in Rockdale County. Uh, to your point, we did have twenty five hundred to three thousand people this past Sunday at Costly Mill Park. Uh, not, not only just the concerts though, again, the Arts for the Ages program was something that was, was a, was very needed in the community. And, and uh, the seniors had a great time with it. To be able to see the multi-generational, um. Everyone mix in and just create a, a, a great event. So it's not just the concerts, it's not just, um, entertainment. It, it is everything that we do from an arts and culture perspective. Uh, the Recreation Operations Supervisor needed to oversee and coordinate facility rentals, setup and logistics for internal and external customers. Uh, I haven't said this yet, but I'll say it again and you may hear it again. Uh, all of our locations are booked through twenty twenty four. And they have been since probably February, March. Uh, most of our facilities are booked through twenty twenty five already. And we have not concluded twenty twenty four. So um, as you can imagine, the phones ring off the hook literally. Uh, during the day for people wanting to use it. And that's a good problem, because what it says is that we're doing something right and people want to use our facilities. And we've maintained a um, great customer service and, and consistency in bringing those back. Uh, the Recreation and Event Coordinator, again, they're needed to make sure that they're doing the logistical, logistical legwork. To get these rentals set up, broken down and flipped over so that we can prepare for the next one. And the splash pad attendant, I mentioned earlier that the lifeguards are going out to the splash pad. Well, we, we will be adding another splash pad at the lawn at Wheeler Park. And so we would like to add a splash pad attendant. This person will be responsible for monitoring both splash pads. And let me bring your attention right there, it says one full-time employee. So that one full-time employee is seasonal and that's why that number is ninety six hundred. That's why it's so low.
Wow. So talk about why you need that splash pad attendant real quick. I know the history, but I think it's important to share with folks why you need that.
The first reason I need it is for safety. The splash pad that we're receiving will be larger than the one that we currently have at Mill State. So yes, we do, we do read about accidents where there are drownings, there's um, injuries at splash pads. People running, don't understand how slippery the ground is. And another big reason is because of vandalism. The last couple of years, we, we've spent uh, probably upwards of a hundred thousand dollars to repair a splash pad out at Mill State. People are, they, they've done everything from um, went into the box to bother the um, the motherboard. The motherboard got hit by lightning one time, someone pulled one of the pipes out of the ground for some reason, I'm not sure why. So it, there's been, you know, cases of vandalism, so we want to make sure that we have eyes on it.
So I, I do have a question about um, Costly Mill. Do, do we have an accounting of the amount of revenue we have brought in from all of those events and rentals?
Commissioner Williams is always ahead of me. You know, I've noticed that. She, she'd be right on me. Keep me sharp, I'm telling you. Yes, we do. And I'll be happy to email you guys that number. We actually have a report that we just completed. Because I'm going to come before the board at a, a B O C meeting to do a, a Parks and Recreation year review. And that's included in that review, but I will get it to you guys.
Thank you.
Sooner.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
No problem.
And, and really the revenue we brought in and then the expenses for the park.
Yes, ma'am. And, and, and when you see that report, what you're going to see is we opened in twenty seventeen, did not program the first year. We, we programmed twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, was closed for COVID for two years. So really, the number that you're looking at is really going to be four years of programming consistently. Um, when you look at it and then you'll be surprised with the number, you'll be pleased with the number.
And I think that's a good account. I'm glad you broke that down, particularly talking about the years during COVID when we were shut down for a period of time. Where we weren't receiving any revenue. And now we're really just beginning to uh, get into some true revenue tracking. Because what you just said about twenty twenty five uh, being already booked out for a lot of our facilities. And particularly Costly Mill, it, the event center has become a, a very popular venue for a lot of events and activities. And people are, are wanting to use. Oftentimes, we get calls in our office and we redirect to Costly Mill because they have the calendar. And the uh, the reservations to keep up with what's going on. So uh, I'm interested in seeing, I think you, in fact, you send that to the entire board.
Yes, sir.
Including the chief to make sure that we have that, because folks will certainly want to know.
Yes, sir, I will. Next slide. Uh, the uh, five-year capital improvement plan request summary. Uh, the bottom line for Johnson Park summary is going to be um, five hundred, I'm sorry. Yes, five hundred seventy seven, go back please. Five hundred seventy seven thousand, six hundred fifty six uh, dollars. And the bottom line for uh, Costly Mill would be eighty two thousand, eight hundred seventy four dollars. But before I move to the next slide, I do want to bring your attention to the infrastructure improvements on the Johnson Park summary. So when it says Johnson Park, it's including that and all the surrounding parks. That's why that number is so large. And also included in that number is we have a pedestrian bridge at Lorraine Park. And we have a pedestrian bridge in South Rockdale that crosses over the South River. Uh, those bridges are in uh, 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 great need of repair. The uh, the material that were used for those um, bridges, uh, again, is antiquated, meaning that it's wood. Now, the, the, the trend now is uh, hardy board, which is not wood. So you got to think if a bridge is going over water, when it evaporates, that's going up into the wood and it's rotting the wood away. And we're having to go in and just constantly replace, 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 replace. So I have a, a, a fee built in to replace all the wood there with hardy board and to repair the uh, the pedestrian bridge at Lorraine Park. So that's why that number is so large.
Any idea how long that bridge is over South River been there?
That, no, I don't know how long it's been there, chairman. That's a great question.
Chief Sanders, any guess to make on that one? It's been out there for a while.
Yeah, it's before I, yeah, it's before I started with the county in twenty seventeen, so. Twenty sixteen, yeah. Yeah, okay. Uh, next slide. The uh, five-year C I P request summary for senior services is seven hundred, the, the bottom line impact is seven hundred eight thousand, nine hundred fifty three dollars. Next slide. So before I um, get into the uh, the questions, which I'm about to give you all the opportunity to ask me questions. I know last year when I came before you, the, the, the quote I left was, what got us here won't get us there. So I ran across this quote the other day, "The magic you're looking for is in the work you're avoiding." "The magic you're looking for is in the work you're avoiding." Parks and Recreation has not avoided any of the work and the result has been magic. I have watched and I'm, I, I live in this community and I have watched uh, this department grow and flourish. And the team just shine and shine and shine and push and push and push. And with you guys' continued help, um, we'll continue to be even more magical as we reimagine Rockdale. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner Washington?
I don't have any questions, but I will, I do have some comments. First of all, thank you and your staff for always giving us excellence in programming and events. And um, thinking outside of the box to give us um, the programming that you all have done. I've said it over and over again, that people often judge us based off of the way our parks look. The, the um, programs that we have and um, what we provide for our youth. And I will say that this department, over and over again, has exceeded all expectations. I remember when we first started, we can even look at Wheeler Park from twenty seventeen to now. The difference in, in, good lord, Pine Law Park from twenty seventeen to now is, is like, as if we've elevated our standards. And you all have consistently met and exceeded all expectations. And I definitely appreciate it because it's, it's, it's almost as if any thought we have. You all take it and run with it and do such a great job. Senior Services, people love, love, love to go to Senior Services. They feel like they have been loved on and taken care of and I appreciate all of, everything that we've done. But we've gone from taking, taking, taking um, basketball goals with bullet holes to do having. Three thousand people at a, at an event. And that was, I haven't heard one complaint, not. I've, the, the complaint that I've heard was the parking and that people that live in Rockdale County couldn't get in. Because the other people that didn't live in Rockdale County had taken all the ball of parking. So they want, they, they don't understand why they paying for it and they didn't have first dibs, so that's the complaint. But that's twenty five hundred to a thousand people, not to say there's that many cars, but.
Right.
That's still a lot of cars and traffic and you all have done so many great things. Easter, where we didn't even anticipate all of the, the um, the interest. That it was gonna be in, on, for the Easter bunny and the Easter egg hunt. So it's just so many great things and you all have done such a good job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
So one of the things I noticed is that the therapeutic recreation program has started again.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I think that's a great need in our community and a, a great thing to happen. I've really enjoyed working with uh, Deputy Director Morgan and getting excited about the programming that she's doing. And as she and I have done some visiting and, and talked about research, but she's done a whole lot more. I think we, we're going to be able to provide a really good service for those in our community. That are dealing with or living with someone who has dementia. I, I think, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Washington that our parks are really. The, the, what the, the part that people see. And um, they look good.
Thank you.
And I'm looking forward to the Wheeler Park being finished over there. I think it's gonna be really exciting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Director, hats off to you and your team. So much to be said about Parks and Recreation, Senior Services and all of what you all provide. The, the biggest thing that has wrapped, ramped up in Rockdale County has been a focus on arts, culture and entertainment. I've been talking about it a lot. But I don't want to negate a glaze over what we did for our local veterans.
Yes.
The veteran's transport vehicle is a big deal. And if all of you all remember, we bought it on the brink of COVID. And for a year and a half, we couldn't operate it. We, it just sat there, brand new vehicle. But now, uh, hearing your report, we've extended the services to so many people. I recall, I think it was earlier this year, maybe late last year, the school teacher who had to teach at Heritage High School. And had to get her, her dad from the VA hospital in downtown Decatur.
Decatur.
She had to be in the classroom, couldn't go there to get him herself. You dispatched the vehicle out there, got him. That was a big, big deal. She takes care of dad at home for what we're doing in Rockdale County, particularly for our veterans, is a big deal. Let's give Parks and Recreation Senior Services a round of applause. Absolutely. Thank you so much.
I have one more question. So is there a new van in the proposed budgets here for the veterans' transport?
We have um, submitted for a grant for a new van for um, for veteran transportation. Because the program is growing so rapidly, so that's a great question. So we have submitted a grant for it.
Okay, so my husband tells me that um, they never go on the interstate. They take all the back roads. To get into Decatur because the, the van won't handle those speeds at the interstate, so.
Yeah, so yes, yes, ma'am, we're working on it.
I really think that's a good thing. When you think about caring folks as riding in a wheelchair.
Yeah.
And they probably wouldn't get to their destinations halfway on time if they took some of that interstate traffic. Because going anywhere west toward Atlanta is a nightmare these days. So absolutely, we need that other van. It's a big help. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Who's up next?
So we have Superior Court and we have Juvenile Court. Um, I'm not sure who's going first. Okay, Superior Court. I know, I was like, they're all here, so.
I uh, I want to introduce our soon-to-be Superior Court Judge. You all know her as our juvenile judge, Judge Wood. We're very happy to have her here. You know Judge Bills. I am a thorn between two roses. So what I'm gonna do is let them discuss the budget a little bit, but I do have some closing remarks that I want to make.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Okay, so the only slide, I think, Shannon, that's, that's really relevant is the org chart. Because when Judge Mumford retires, I will become the chief judge in, in January. And so his, his staff, which is one person larger than mine, or actually two, the TPO and Pam. So there's two more people in my org chart and then my org chart will become Maureen's. So the reason we're all three here is just to ask for one more judicial assistant that would be in my office that will be Maureen's. So right now, state court has two judicial assistants, each of the state court judges have two, Judge Mumford has two. And it took him years to get that second person. Now my office, who will be Maureen's org chart, just has the one. So the need is great for another judicial assistant in Superior Court, so that all the judges would have the same number of judicial assistants. Because as you know, all of the caseloads are split evenly and randomly between the two, two in state and two in Superior.
And I do want to talk about the current arrangement. It's not really that we have a full-time judicial assistant.
I'm gonna ask all of you to use that mic, because they're screaming and the folks wanted us to do some streaming and we're doing it and they're watching and listening. And they're, they complained when they can't hear it too.
It's uh, I want to talk about the, the judicial assistant that we do have. That judicial assistant actually floats between Nancy's office and my office if one of the other assistants is out. And they handle a full-time TPO caseload. So this would move a, a judicial assistant that's not having to handle a TPO caseload. Uh, and that's family violence, stalking, that sort of stuff, over to administrative stuff. One of the reasons we need that is because the, as things have grown, we need full-time calendar clerks that just do nothing but calendar. And then we need people that deal with the public and scheduling and those sorts of things. You got any comment you'd like to make, Judge?
I'm looking forward to the transition and um, I think this position is definitely needed. Because um, I'm, I'm gonna be doing full-time the work and I want us to be fully staffed. Um, I don't want to necessarily come into a situation where we know that we have um, a need and we didn't ask for it. And so I'm grateful for the judges coming and making sure to make it very plain and very clear, um, what the ask is and why it is. Um, and I think it's, it's due, it's time.
Well, let, let me say this, Judge Bills, Judge Wood, Judge Mumford. I've, we've been doing this with all of the folks who've been presenting for this twenty twenty five budget. And you used the word a moment ago, Judge Wood, that I want one of the three of you, if not all three of you, to kind of expound on, and that is the need. I think oftentimes, the public. I think oftentimes the public doesn't understand our auxiliary partners such as the judicial courts, the DA's office, the coroner's office, the sheriff's office. The board of commissioners is tasked with this budget and allocating these, appropriating these funds. And the general public typically just looks at us and think we're coming up with these numbers and these requests or proposing these budgets just because sometimes we don't have anything better to do. The truth of it is the county has grown and there are needs. But can you, either one of you, if not the three of you, just take a moment and drill down. The DA did a great job articulating the, the caseload and the growth. But all of you all encountered this on a day-to-day basis. Judge Mumford, you've been here for a long time. This is not the Rockdale County of the 70s. Talk to us.
Nancy, you want to address that?
Well, so I can tell you what I've seen, just since I've been in Superior Court, I've only been there since 2021. And where the need comes in is that Superior Court has exclusive jurisdiction over all family law domestic cases. So that's adoptions, divorces, custody, change of custody, child support, legitimation, divorce, all of those things. And more and more people are self-represented. They have no idea what they're doing, but they want us to get their divorce done. And of course legally and ethically, we cannot give legal advice. So our staff is tasked with people emailing them, calling them daily, you know, when can I get on a calendar? When can I get on a calendar? Well, the rules lay out clearly things that have to be filed, domestic relations affidavits, all of the things that we have to comply with by law, that they have no idea what, what we're saying. And either can't or won't get an attorney. So to me, that is where the need comes in because now our staff who's really just should be answering the phone and trying to make a simple calendar is trying to figure out who can even go on that calendar. So and of course we do all the felonies as well, which is especially setting trials and other things. The DA plays a big role in that and so does the clerk. But it is a constant and of course we're a mandatory e-file state with civil. So one clerk judicial assistant has to manage the whole e-file queue as well. So there is way more than one judicial assistant can handle.
One comment I would like to make about that is.
Judge, if you use that.
One comment I would like to make about that is that uh I have always tried to be very frugal in what we ask for and I, I hope you all have appreciated that over the years. I wouldn't be asking for this if I didn't need it. Next year, I've also resisted going for uh e-filing on criminal cases. Next year, that's gonna happen. So that's gonna just put a lot more pressure on the staff trying to deal with those e-file queues. Which sometimes I think, having been around back when it all was kept on a note card, uh I think it may be harder to do it in the, on the computer than it is on the note card. But we're gonna have to deal, these ladies are gonna have to deal with that. So that's, that's another area of need. Anything you want to comment on?
Commissioner Washington, any questions?
Yes. So I'm looking at the org chart. Is, is it correct that you all have one, two, three? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? Eight people under, on your jurisdiction, I mean, under your purview?
Currently, yes. Those are grant funded.
And most of them are grant funded?
Grant funded, yeah.
Which ones? I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of, I'm trying to um think of parity because we had another judge come and ask us for more people also. So I'm trying to think of parity amongst the courts. It, it seems as if one court is running almost day-to-day, you know, day-to-day operating court that, and you're only operating with eight people. I would like to see um offer, I want it to be equal. It doesn't make sense that another court would have 10, 15 people under them and they're not in court as much. So I just want to see the parity.
It's kind of hard to compare apples and oranges, I think. All of these positions are domestic violence court, accountability courts that each judge decides on his or her own if they're gonna do. Judge Wood and I both do. Judge Mumford does as well. So the accountability court positions, Brenda Ernest is under, is under me for stepping up. So all of those things don't really have anything to do with the day-to-day Superior Court. But like I said, those are grant funded. So you know, we have a court reporter that we have to have for felonies. And then we have the judicial assistant. The law clerk is state paid and we both have a law clerk that's state paid.
Right. And we both have one judicial assistant. And then we have Pam that is gonna wind up being just a judicial assistant and not be doing TPOs any longer. And then we would add a judicial assistant so we can split up that, that workload. I don't know exactly how it's gonna be split. I don't know if criminal and civil calendaring will be split. But that'll be a decision that these ladies have to make.
So this org chart.
Essentially, we only have two employees, a secretary and a.
And a law clerk. And those are state paid. So we're asking that each, like Judge Mumford was able to get to, to share that each Superior Court has a county-paid judicial assistant. Because that is gonna be Maureen's org chart, more or less. She'll have her accountability court and then the judicial assistant that's now Pam and the TPO coordinator will be under my org chart.
So is the, is the um drug court, accountability court, is that moving with you or is that staying with Judge Wood?
The drug court is staying with me and then resource court.
With her. That's what I'm currently doing, which is the mental health court.
And there are no grant-funded positions for the resource court?
They're all grant funded. There, there's no county salary position other than through a grant.
I, but I just see one position whereas we've got account, lab services and several.
Yeah. Well, if you look under accountability court, it says two positions, I think.
That says four, yeah.
Four positions.
And two are full-time.
Yeah.
So we have some contract, the case manager.
So, so all of, this represents both courts. I'm looking at the organization chart for Court One and then I'm looking, I've got the.
Right. And they're different because we each have a full-time accountability court coordinator, resource court and drug court, and those are all grant paid. But they are full-time employee positions.
Any other questions? Can I just take a moment of personal privilege? I think this is about the 23rd time that I have appeared before this body on a budget hearing. And I want to especially thank this last group of commissioners that I've dealt with. You have done more for the Rockdale Superior Court, our courthouse, our courts than anybody else ever did. And while maybe, maybe not everybody appreciates what you have done, I certainly appreciate it. And I know it has been accomplished at great personal sacrifice. And I thank you for what you do for Rockdale County and what you have done for the courts in the past. And with any luck, you won't see me at a budget meeting anymore.
Well, Judge Mumford, thank you so much for those words. They mean everything to me. And I'm gonna miss you probably more than anybody else in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all gonna miss him.
Yes, we are all gonna miss him. Thank you Judge Mumford for your words. And we appreciate your recognition of what we have done. And it has certainly been a great personal sacrifice. So thank you.
So thanks to all of you. Judge Mumford, thank you for your words. Uh certainly that resonates with all, all three of us here on this board. It feels good to hear some refreshing comments about the work that we've done. And you've already has been a true personal sacrifice. But because of your time and tenure, you represent what I've talked about for the last 16 years. The brand, the institution and standard of Rockdale County. You're gonna be missed, but as you talked about being between two roses, these two judges have done some phenomenal work, uh holding up the bloodstain banner for Rockdale County. We appreciate, we look forward to working with them the days ahead. I know that the new board will do what it needs to do to embrace what we've, what we've done in this community going forward. And but, but thank you for your kind words and thank you for all of your service.
Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause, everybody. Judge Wood, you head.
Juvenile Court.
That's right. Juvenile. We, we're transitioning. Transitioning.
Seventeen.
Thank you.
All right. So um this will be my last time presenting on behalf of the juvenile court. And um if we can just move, well, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about the values. The values that we've identified is making sure that we continue to identify and utilize the resources and the programming that are aimed at effective interventions and expedited resolutions for our youth and court-involved families. I think that's really important because um when I was appointed in 2016, all the way to where we are now in 2024, um I took that charge very seriously. One of the major differences between the juvenile court system and the adult court system is the focus on rehabilitation. And so I want to thank you all for um helping me see that vision through. One of the things that changed from 2016 to 2024 is we went from having one accountability court in the juvenile court to having three accountability courts in the juvenile court. Because of that, we are, um I, I don't think there is another county in the state that is the size of our county um that has five accountability courts, excuse me, six accountability courts. So we literally have every single accountability court that's available in the state of Georgia minus the Veterans Treatment Court, which we don't have because of, you know, there are census requirements to be able to have that. But I feel very confident that there could be a track that could be formed from some of our existing adult courts. The reason I point that out is because I believe it's an access to justice issue when you have um communities uh that are neighboring communities that offer rehabilitative programming and you're not able to offer it in your own community. So um that was a big thing to start these accountability courts. As I transition, um you know, we went in 2016 to have in court maybe two times per week to now that we have court every week, Monday through Thursday. Um and we have accountability courts um at least um twice a month for each court. Okay, we have, we have staffing in court today. And so um we've taken the job that one judge was doing and we've had that judge doing all the things. And so one of the things, and really the only thing that I'm asking for is for you all to consider bringing on a part-time juvenile court judge. I have looked at the numbers and I have looked for a county our size. Every county that has 10,000 more, 100,000 more in their population and every county that has 10,000 less, 80,000 in their population, has at least a judge and a half. So even if you didn't do a workload study, and I'm, I'm telling you, we're doing more with less and we have been for quite some time in Rockdale County Juvenile Court. But if you do that study, you will find that we are ready for a part-time judge. And why that is so important is because as I move on, we have people who um have applied for this position and whoever that person is that's appointed, I want them to be able to come in and feel confident that they can continue the work that we've been doing. I don't want anyone to come in and say, that's a lot. And so I just, that is my ask. And if you want to move forward to the slide for the ask, I think I put the figure in there. $40,000. Um if you ask where that position, that number came from, I just took it straight from ACCG, ACCG.
A R C?
ACCG. Um I think they list for a part-time judge for juvenile court for how many days per week, what that salary would look like. And so I just took what was the published salary for that. Um and so that's the ask. And that's it. Any?
What about this um receptionist position from part-time to full-time?
It looks like we have asked for our part-time receptionist to be reclassed from part-time to full-time. I would love for you all to consider that. Obviously, the major difference will be how often we have someone that's facing the public. And right now, we don't have someone that's there every single day um uh for the entire workday. What we've, what we've had is we've had someone that is there um during the times that we um have court, but not for the entire day. So um just basically the heavy periods. So this would allow someone to be court-facing. Right now, what you have is you have your clerk of court or your deputy clerk, or sometimes maybe even your bailiff, somebody that will run to the front uh if somebody comes in during that period of time that our receptionist is not there. So obviously that's an ask, but the major ask is for the um part-time associate. The other thing I just want to point out with um the part-time associate position is if, and I don't, I don't know who will be, I don't know who will be appointed. I don't know who that person will be. I think the application window closes maybe next week. But if that is someone who does, who, they have to live in the community, that's number one. And if that is someone that does substantial work currently with the juvenile court and you want someone that has a passion for that, so I would hope that everyone that's applied has, you know, at least done some work with the juvenile court. If that's who that person is, if they have conflicts, if they've represented parents or children who've come through the court or if they have prosecuted, um or if they have defended children, then there's gonna be a significant number of cases that they won't be able to hear just because they will be conflicted out. In the situations where I've had a few, um even myself, where I can't hear a case because of a conflict, we still have to have a judge to hear that case. And so we're having to come out of our professional services budget to pay for a judge, who's a temporary pro temp judge. So um my ask is for the part-time judge because I think you're probably going to be paying one way or the other for someone to come in and hear cases that the new judge can't hear. So in addition to the increased workload that we've had over the past eight years, take also into consideration that you may have someone coming into the position who is not gonna be able to hear all the cases for the foreseeable future.
Commissioner Washington, additional for Judge Wood?
I think I'm clear. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, all right.
Well, thank you very much.
Judge, congratulations on your move to the next, you're in the middle of your transition. And thank you for all the work you've done for our children and families in Rockdale County in juvenile court. You've represented us well and we know you're gonna do great jobs over in um state court.
Well, thank you. I know you have every single year taken very seriously this job that you have when it comes to the budget. And there has never been a time that I have come and been able to present to you what we were trying to do in the juvenile court and back it up with solid evidence as to why it was important and that you didn't at least hear me out. And um most of the time, if we were not able to uh secure the funding, you still supported the programming and you still supported the mission of the juvenile court. So thank you and I know that that hopefully will continue in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give Judge Wood a round of applause.
So we have one more department and that's Technology Services, but we're running way ahead. So should we take a break?
Can they come early?
Well, we've asked. Um we're working on that. So.
That was gonna be exactly what.
So TBD on that one.
All right. Well, then let's just go, while they're on the way, we would hope they're on, let's take at least five minutes.
Okay.
Take five minute break.
Well, what are we gonna do in between after that? We'll take another five.
Is the, she's the last department?
That's correct.
Oh.
So Director, you are the last department and you're after lunch.
Now what are you trying to say?
I'm, you know, she's very thorough also, so we're asking for a little less. She's looking at me like, don't, don't do that.
Well, listen, ladies and gentlemen, we're back and we're wrapping up and moving to our final department for today as we move into our budget. Hearing for our 2025 budget. And I want to make sure I take an opportunity before we close out and even before Director Moore Jackson from Technology Services gets into our presentation. I, I really believe over the last couple of days, these two days combined, we've got a lot of information from all of our counter departments. I want to say hats off to our finance department for doing a wonderful job with this presentation and hosting this year. Uh, and also taking care of us for lunch. Just give finance right now, a round of applause. They've done a great job. Absolutely. And this is that time of year when the finance department really has to rise to the occasion publicly. Because all of the work that they do behind the scenes to get ready for this budget hearing and guess what? It's far from over because this is just the hearing part of it. Now they've got to figure out what's on the minds of myself and the commissioners to go back and do the due diligence. And to make the decisions, decide who gets what and blah, blah, blah. We only have a limited amount of money. And you've heard all the departments and every department said need, 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 and everybody's important. So we've got a task before us to make a decision over the next few weeks as we make our way. But before we get to that point, we still have another department. Nothing in Rockdale County happens without technology services. This meeting wouldn't be happening without technology services. Commissioners, are you ready?
Yep.
We're going to yield to Director Moore Jackson. Director.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for this opportunity. Good afternoon to you all and thank you for the opportunity to present the fiscal year 2025 operating and capital budget request for the Technology Services Department. And also to the Board of Commissioners, thank you very much for your support of T S D. And your willingness to learn about the changes in the world of technology since we've been here. Thank you very much. In the technology services, we work to be an effective technology leader, a change agent in business, technology and innovation for Rockdale County government. Through collaborations with other departments and the elected offices and our stakeholders, we provide efficient, cost-effective information technology services. Which support the vision and mission of Rockdale County. We do this by exercising the following values: integrity. We hold ourselves and each other to the highest ethical standards. Respect. We treat each other and our stakeholders with consideration, professionalism and dignity. Excellence. We are committed to achieving the highest quality in everything we do. Collaboration and teamwork. Our success lies in working together, fostering a mutually supportive environment and knowing that with passion and vigor, together we can. Agility. Adapt to change and innovate for growth. Ownership. We always act ethically and in the best interest of our county and our stakeholders. Execution. We understand the importance of executing a plan on schedule and on budget. Next slide, please. These successes are a reflection of our continuing efforts to build upon our successes that we've made since our arrival here in 2021. To ensure we're taking the appropriate measures to safeguard the county IT infrastructure and the continuity of operations. In addition to the successes listed above, uh, we would also like to highlight the Rockdale internet structure was, which has helped with automating some of the county's internal workflows also. And as you can see from the list above, some of the successes have been the deployment of the call centers for tax and the water department. The new copier deployment and over 6,000 plus calls completed for county departments and elected offices this past year. Opportunities. One way we ensure we're good stewards of taxpayers' funds is that our team is reviewing existing contracts to ensure we're implementing all features of the contracts that the county is paying for. And we ask that the county components complete a project request form to ensure technology initiatives address their business need. Also under opportunities, we started a quality, uh, excuse me, a quarterly tech operations meeting. Where we invited all of the departments and elected offices throughout the county, like the sheriff's office, the clerk of the courts, EMA tax. We invited everyone in the county to send either a representative from their office or if they have an IT personnel staff to send them in order so that they are aware of the services that we provide through technology services in order to prevent the duplication of efforts or waste of resources throughout the county. And also as referenced in our value statement, one way that we seize these opportunities and face these challenges head on is to make sure that the county's IT projects are success by collaborating with the requesting department or elected office. And we provide an IT project manager to ensure that the projects and initiatives follow the complete IT life cycle. And all milestones are addressed. And we place an emphasis on the user acceptance testing through that. So all of the, uh, projects will make sure we go through planning, preparation and design. That's phase one. Phase two would be the implementation and deployment. Phase three would be the testing and system cut over. And then phase four would be the end user testing. And then phase five would be the documentation and the system would be up and running. Next slide, please. The work in T S D falls under all three of the strategic themes at Reimagined Rockdale. We in T S D are unique in that we have approximately 100 plus additional strategic initiatives. Because we have to collaborate with all of the departments and elected offices in the county in order to provide technical assistance in achieving their strategic initiatives in order to enable them to meet their business requirements. For the nine reimagined Rockdale strategic initiatives that you see listed, they're specifically assigned to T S D. And they fall under the innova- innovation strategic theme. And the first eight of the strategic goals that you, that you see, they align under the strengthened infrastructure and transportation strategic goal. And our ninth strategic initiative falls under the strategic goal of integrate innovation. And the items referenced in this budget are all aligned with these nine strategic initiatives for Technology Services Department. And all of T S D's work assignments are aligned with the reference strategic themes, goals and initiatives in the strategic plan. Next slide, please. This provides a summary of Technology Services Department operating budget requests for fiscal year 2025. Overall, the funding items in our budget requests will help to address enhanced data security, cybersecurity risk management, operational efficiency and employee productivity. Next slide, please. And this is an itemized accounting code listing of what we have presented for the 2025 operating budget. When it comes to technology support in the public sector, we ask that everyone recognize how important technology plays in just about everything a local government does. This includes public safety, our utilities, our communications, our transportation, basically every aspect of government. Technology is more than a simple expense line item because it supports just about every business faction of our government. Unfortunately, some do not realize this and is viewed by some as more of a luxury than a necessity. To illustrate that we understand that we have to do much more with much less, we continuously work to ensure that where possible, we're working to put funds to better use. And striving to be good stewards of taxpayers' funds. Yes, we are requesting a budget increase and additional employees during a, during a, a season of budget cuts. But we work every day to find savings and put funds to better use. For example, under strategic initiative number two, which for technology services is maintain endpoint devices and manage asset inventory. One of the highlights from our strategic initiative number two is that we completed a cell phone reconciliation for the entire county. Where our office was able to cancel 45 cellphone lines. Which saved the county approximately $2,000 monthly with a projected yearly savings of approximately $24,000. And a projected five-year savings of approximately $120,000. Another key example, under strategic initiative number five, continue to improve technology infrastructure. In T S D, we work to upgrade our network copiers throughout the county. This will give us all the features of the previous contract and additional security features to include paper cut. Which will give us the ability to tailor individual copier security features and office need. This gave the county a projected monthly cost savings of over $6,000. That results in a projected annual call savings of over $73,000. And the projected cost savings for that five-year contract is $366,000. And one more key, this is the last proposed projected saving. Technology Service Department has submitted an enterprise agreement for our NOC, our NOC. And basically this agreement covers a five-year period. This contract is normally a contract that the county renews every single year. It's in the process. NOC is the operation systems. But our NOC is, um, our operation system where basically we have a contractor that monitors all the switches throughout the county on a, um, 24 hours, seven day, uh, a week event. So basically you have someone actually staring it and then when a power, like if there's a power surge or storm goes down, they immediately can tell us when a switch goes out.
So is NOC an acronym and if it is, what does it stand, what does it, what does it stand for? You, you referred to it as NOC, I think that's what she was.
Yes. For some reason I drew a quick, Network Operations Center.
Okay.
Cause when she, the split second she said it, I drew a blank. But no, a NOC is a Network Operations Center, but I did explain it for her so that she can better understand it. And basically we do not have the staffing here to maintain. First you would need the technical level to maintain it. And then you would need a whole team of people working 24 hours, basically like the 911 center, just monitoring a system.
I don't think the commissioner was just asking for herself. One of the things we've been doing is making sure all these folks who are listening, when they hear these acronyms, they know what that means. Cause a lot of times, sometimes we don't know what it means. But certainly sometimes the lay folks don't know what it means and it helps when we can, we educate them along the way.
Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And then the other, um, acronym that I have been using, I will use for, um, in order to, for brevity is T S D.
Right.
And T S D stands for Technology Services Department.
That's correct.
But basically the, um, the NOC contract, our Network Operations Center contract that the county has had for some years now is renewed on a yearly basis. That contract, we're looking at an enterprise agreement where we have already submitted. It is going through the review process to be presented at a upcoming, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting. And that particular contract, if you all choose to sign it, would provide a $55,000 plus savings for the county over a five-year period. So that's another area where we're looking at funds to better use. In reference to the, uh, funds here, the $688,000 increase over the fiscal year 2024 budget is due mainly to an increase of around approximately $75,000 for the county operating system, unified enterprise, which is an annual license renewal that the county has. Another key increase for this is the county operating system enterprise annual support agreement is increased over $20,000. And also another, um, major factor contributing to this increase is an increase for the ISP, which is an internet service provider for the entire county. That contract that the county has to have in order to exist in this day and age is increasing over $100,000. And then our actual NOC contract itself is seeing an increase of around $100,000. And one of the reasons why we would prefer to, and we're suggesting rather, that the county enters into an EA, which is an enterprise agreement for the NOC, is because each year that we're not in an enterprise agreement, it sees an, a steady increase every single year. By entering into a five-year contract, we're locking that price in for five years. And then of course the remaining is due to inflation and overall increase across the board for the operating budget. Next slide, please. This is the current fiscal year. You can go to, okay, thank you. This is the current fiscal year 2024 organizational chart for the Technology Services Department. Next slide, please. This is the proposed organizational chart for T S D for fiscal year 2025. For the new proposed organizational chart, we added a new business alignment that focuses more on the county's technology business needs. Which specifically we're creating the GIS division within, um, T S D, basically separating them out. And also the cybersecurity into their own divisions within T S D. The service desk position that, um, was the only position in the past that T S D has requested for the last two years. Because we do understand the impact of the FTEs and the expense it has on the budget. Therefore we have been judicious and still are in the requests that we make. Nonetheless, we did not receive that position in the previous request. In the interim, the number of service requests to technology services has increased tremendously. As the county has grown, the request for service has grown. As the cyber world has grown, the request for service has grown. We have gone from five to 6,000 service requests a year to now we're averaging 7,000 to 8,000. And this year we may be on the, the track of receiving 9,000 requests for service. So please note that all of these, um, service quests are new service requests. The T S D team does an outstanding job of meaning our key performance indicators. The T S D team does an outstanding job of meaning our key performance indicators of addressing service requests in a timely manner. As you can see by the, um, proposed organizational chart, by placing an applications analyst position in the service desk, it will help us with providing better customer service on the service desk for all of Rockdale County's employees. It will assist them with the service with the increase of the software programs in the county and also to support the needs of the departments and the elected offices. And anytime that we're addressing all of these services that, requests that I referred to that we're on a track now, receiving nine thousand for this fiscal year, since the current organizational chart for T S D only has two analysts in the service desk, in order to address all those requests for services, the employees that you see under the other fields, the business operations, the network infrastructure and the cybersecurity team, all of them are being pulled away from their core functions in order to address service requests for the rest of the county. So when they're pulled away from their core functions, they cannot address those core functions. Next slide, please. This slide here, the top ten benefits that a strong technology workforce can bring to our county lists ten of key areas that was supplied by N A C O. And N A C O is the National Association of County Organizations. Just to highlight a couple of the areas here, longer retention by making sure that the technology department is properly staffed and funded, we will have longer retention by growing and nurturing technology staff. Our turnover would tend to be less, and this in turn would promote the tenure and decrease the amount of constant retraining. To highlight another area that you see listed would be contractor costs. Our county can avoid the hidden cost of contractors. While contractors may work faster and take less time to complete tasks and projects, they're still temporary in nature and they tend to have less of a sense of ownership and their priorities may not always align with the county's priorities. Historical data and experiences lost and we have to repeatedly pay for the same services. Where if we increase our staffing, we would have those resources in-house. Also, recent I T trends and data support that more third-party vendors are associated with network attacks. And to highlight the last area here, the lower liability, which is number six listed there. A well-trained, properly-staffed and satisfied workforce lessens the chances of liabilities occurring in the county. Next slide, please. Our staffing level goes hand in hand with the security and the operability of the county's network. Similar to public safety, our technologists quite often work twenty-four hours a day, all week long. The county's I T workload is too heavy to have one person in any given discipline, like for example, a network administrator that you saw in the previous slide, or a systems engineer. Where in our current org chart has one person in that field, the proposed org chart has two in those particular fields. Yes, we do cross-train in T S D, but for specialized fields, cross-training only goes so far. In recent examples of employees having to work overnight and over the weekend and creating a skill deficit during your basic workday, for just a couple of examples of those recently, everyone remembers the blue screen incident, basically it was a worldwide event. The impact of that, it affected businesses worldwide. Basically, Microsoft Windows devices showed a blue screen at login. The response, T S D worked starting at around one o'clock in the morning, through the following day to identify the issues, assess the impact, come up with a plan in order to resolve everything and actually implement the solution. We had to work through the next day and into the next day to do that. Another recent example is the lightning strike at E nine-one-one. The impact with that, the CAD system, CAD, which is a computer aided dispatch and the G C I C phones and everything, the call taker terminators were all down. What was the response? They require, we had to restore the power, the switch had to be replaced, we had to complete troubleshooting. And all of this had to be completed, of course, in the middle of the night. And for the last example there, some power outages at our fire stations recently due to storms and U P S failures. And basically, we had to go on site in order to help get them back up and running. And just for the titles of some other impacts that took us into the night without going into, um, in-depth on it, the new tax office setup, true, most of the move did take place during the day. However, due to some complications, in order to help her meet the deadline that she wanted to have her office back up and running and meet her state requirements, the T S D team had to work on-site till two o'clock in the morning. And then, of course, those same people that worked till two o'clock in the morning had to be at work the next day in order to service the rest of the county.
Yeah, let me interrupt you right there. Let's not be right there, cause that was, I'm glad you shared that because, Director, we no longer work in a world with a workforce culture who would work till two o'clock in the morning to get something done and then gladly pop up and be on the job and clocking in at eight A M. on the regular shift. People don't do that anymore. Uh, those days are completely gone. And every inch of time and hour that you ask, we ask an employee to do something, they want to be and they expect to be compensated.
Thank you.
Um, the wor- the days of the old-school folks who went above and beyond, that just, it is what it is. I'm, I'm, I'm saying it, uh, you know, uh, jokingly around here, I call them the four-fifty-eighters. Technically, uh, we're supposed to leave the cubicle of the office at five o'clock for those folks who wrap it up at five o'clock. But, uh, my, our staff have heard me mention about the four-fifty-eighters who are almost always across the parking lot or in their car right at four-fifty-eight.
Right.
So, so, and I mentioned that, Commissioners, because I, I think it's important. Again, when we talk about attraction or recruiting and retention, the qualified competent folks, folks that want to be paid, the wor- the days of folks doing what a lot of people who are sometimes often critical of our operations, those folks are out of touch and out of tune with what's happening today in terms of today's workforce. I mean, it's all over social media, there's a lot of humor, uh, humor about the fact that when my boss asks me to do something, child leads, I'm not gonna do it because folks are out of there. And that's a real, that's a real thought process for folks now because if they stay five oh one or five fifteen or five thirty or till a whole hour later, they're expecting to get paid. And I think this is really a good space and a place to talk about this because people don't work like that anymore. And when we talk about recruited recruitment and retaining folks, all of these factors have to be, uh, considered. The last piece I'll put in there, government is totally different than, uh, the private sector and the corporate world who often have incentives. They can incentivize people with bonuses and different things they can do. Government is limited. We're very limited, uh, in terms of how we can incentivize an employee. So the culture is important, the workplace environment is very, very important. Those small things that we can do as an organization to keep people happy and keep people here are critically important to the success of this county and to this organization. I wanted to make sure I said that because, um, you know, us old schools and beyond generations sometimes don't get it. They don't connect the dots that, uh, folks don't work like that anymore. And you, you, you've got to be ready to, if you're gonna ask somebody to, uh, burn the midnight oil, you better be ready to pay.
Correct.
Cause it, it don't happen the way it used to. It, it is what it is. There's, there's no need of talking about what we did back in the day because that doesn't work and it doesn't exist. You, you, if you want them to show up or to be their extra, you gotta pay for it.
And we need them with the adequate skills in order to complete the work.
Absolutely.
And, um, I didn't make reference to like just security updates, which have to be ran at night because the entire county is working during the day, so we can't run security updates during the day because it'd take the whole county down. And these things that I made reference to, nearly every single scenario happened like within the last month. So if they're working on around the clock like that within the last month, that is the reason why you see the increase in the number of employees for the technology services department in the increase in our budget.
Well, the reality of it is that those bad actors are out there working around the clock.
Yes.
Hackers are working around the clock. People are looking to scam and scheme you out of money through your checking account, through your, uh, social media accounts, any type of. Those bad actors are working around the clock. So cybersecurity is real, you equated it to law enforcement, it is law enforcement.
It is.
Uh, it's a new wave of law enforcement. So many law enforcement agencies now have a cybersecurity team within their agency to go after some of these bad actors. So it's a big, big deal. I'm paying attention to the article that came out in July from Bloomberg Industries in, uh, in New York and in D C. And, and the industry of cyber technology has now been basically, uh, set by what Bloomberg is doing. Take a look at those articles and, and when you mentioned, uh, N A C O a little while ago. Uh, thank God, the work that you've done representing Rockdale County through and with N A C O, but how N A C O is directly tied to Bloomberg. Each year, when we go to the legislative conference as well as the national conference, there is a breakout session, uh, uh, and, and Bloomberg is almost, if they're not facilitating and hosting, they have some type of mention to the way that they're leading that particular, uh, industry in terms of, uh, cybersecurity and tech, hackers and folks are, they're, they're working right now. They're working all twenty-four hours, so we have to have, as you mentioned, qualified competent people. But we have to know that the world of, 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 of employees and workforce i- is just not what it used to be. You've got to pay people to be present.
Yes, thank you, sir. Next slide, please. So please note that this request of twenty-one positions, that's total, not increases, only increase of five. Cause she looked up on that one. No, it's, it's sixteen plus five to equal the twenty-one.
Well, I'm glad you said it, cause not just to look on Commissioner Washington's face, but the people listening.
Yes.
And it's always good to break it down, cause they, they will assume in a minute.
Yes, it's only an increase of five positions, but that sounds like a lot. But that is a very conservative request. Per the industry standards, for, uh, for an environment of approximately twelve hundred employees, the range ratio should be one to fifty. So one technologist to fifty employees. So that would be asking for twenty-four. And my request is only taking us up to asking for twenty-one. Okay? Now that's the very conservative because some standards suggest that it should be a ratio of one to twenty-five. Especially when a full suite of technology services are being provided, like a service desk, network operations, I T project management, I T purchasing, on-premise data center and so forth. If you go back and look at our organizational chart, you'll note that we're offering those services in Technology Services Department here in Rockdale County. So per industry standards, we should be asking for a lot more. Next slide, please. This slide and the next one provides the justifications for the position reclassifications that we're requesting to ensure that the job descriptions more adequately reflect the work that our T S D employees are completing now and what our mission and workload needs them to complete. We've been resourceful in identifying extra help by relying heavily on interns to help minimize the human resources gap in T S D. Despite our efforts, the human resources gap still exists. Plus, the interns, although very helpful, are not adequately skilled enough to address our workload nor they provide enough hours, they're interns. In reference to the reclassifications, the complexity of technology has changed. So to have technology job requirements, position descriptions, titles and functions. As previously referenced, T S D's entire workload is in alignment with the Rockdale County's reimagine strategic plan. This is key for Rockdale because prior to now, the technology strategic planning was not as well-defined as it is today. And most importantly, the I T employees did not understand how their positions were aligned to the I T strategic initiatives for the county. Now, all T S D employees understand the importance of strategic planning and how they work support in align with the county's strategic plans. Next slide, please. The G I S reclassifications are a reflection of the G I S industry. Basically, a G I S analyst currently stays in a position on an average of two years before they're looking for a new position. By changing the G I S structure for Rockdale County and the other positions I made reference to, we are reinforcing our retention of our employees and giving them more of a reason to stay with Rockdale County. And it's giving them a more structured opportunity to be promoted to the next levels in their current positions, keeping them here. Next slide, please. The current reality of doing business in a 2024 cyber world plays a major role in our request for additional employees for T S D. In technology, delaying or postponing replenishment or upgrading systems is creating a huge liability and could severely impact critical systems with disastrous consequences that grow with each passing day. This slide references some general statistics for the I T world that we all live in today. The T S D budget is a reflection of the cost of the county doing business in a digital age. For another key statistics in reference, in addition to the ones listed above, for quarter two of this year, 2024, research has shown that there has been a thirty percent year-over-year increase in cyber attacks globally, reaching over sixteen hundred attacks per organization per week. And the government is the industry that's leading as being the victim of those attacks. The dramatic rise in cyber attacks globally, particularly ransomware incidents, signals an urgent need for a robust cybersecurity framework. We must prioritize our cybersecurity, adopting customized strategies to effectively combat the involving threat landscape. By implementing advanced security measures, fostering a culture of awareness and preparing for potential incidents, the county can better defend against the relentless tide of cyber threats. The time to act is now before the next wave of attacks strikes. Um, next slide, please. Thank you for the opportunity to present the capital request for the Technology Services Department for the next five years. The majority of T S D C I P presentation consists of technology programs and improvements. And in the proposal, we tie each of the areas listed to the reimagine Rockdale Strategic Initiatives for the Rockdale County Government for the next five years. The eight strategic initiatives listed fall under the strengthen infrastructure and transportation strategic goal and are specifically assigned to Technology Services Department and reimagine Rockdale. For strategic initiative number one, support I T operations while providing security and sustainability of operations in order to support all county computing operations to improve security and sustainability of operations and to maintain backup data center location. In order to strengthen our cybersecurity posture and ensure data recovery and security in the case of an event, cause remember, it's not a if, but when something of that nature happens. We have identified items in our, um, C I P request to assist with that. And I want to bring attention to one specific item that you will see listed in the, um, C I P request for this strategic initiative. That will be the, um, switches throughout the county and then also the security software upgrades for the county. They, the switches will need to be replaced because of an approaching, um, end of their life cycle. So this is something, um, this item has been on our C I P request for multiple years. And thus far, we have spread the cost over the five-year period. If the county continues to delay this, we will have to address the entire cost in one fiscal year due to the life cycle of those switches expiring.
Hang on, Ms. Charlotte, you okay? You all right? Okay, you needed a water?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just checking on you. Okay, all right, go ahead, Director.
Thank you for that. For strategic initiative number two, maintain endpoint devices and manage asset inventory. The amount listed for the computer upgrades and the refresh is for the entire five-year period. We, in TSD, we propose to invest $400,000 per year to replace the computer and network upgrades across the county. The TSD proposed computer upgrades should also address the specific legitimate requests from other offices and departments across the county if this item is funded, is fully funded. The $400,000 would pay for approximately 200 workstations, which is one-fifth of the workstations in the environment for the county. Also, under strategic initiative number five that you see listed here, improve technology infrastructure. This section for building improvements, renovations, and expansions is to support a simulation computer lab to run a virtual environment. This will enable us to better test the rollout of software and server upgrades and network configuration changes before they're deployed into an actual working environment.
And where would you set that up at?
For now, it would have to be at Technology Services Department unless it's in the space that we have requested for a couple of years now, in the suite next door to Technology Services Department. That would be an ideal space for that. Also, that space next door to technology, the suite next to us would also provide the space needed for training, for IT training for the county. Like, for example, we recently had a campaign for security awareness training, and for those employees that have not completed their training, and then when they're, like, for example, if you do not complete your training, your access to the network is terminated.
Boy, do I know that. Let me tell you, hold on a minute, because I don't know how often y'all, the, the changing of your password, but you, you better stay on, you gotta stay on top of that changing of that password thing. And, uh, for those of us who are rocking and rolling, really, really busy, that can come up, it creeps up, or I, I'm like, wait a minute now, I thought I just changed this password just a few days ago, and it pops up again, you gotta come up with it, and you gotta really slow down and think about, um, what you're gonna use, because it's so sensitive. If you use any of what you used before, it won't use that. I mean, it's a, woo, it, it, I will tell you, slightly get on my nerves, but it's good because it works, and I'm just being real. I know somebody else is thinking this, they just don't want to say it, or they don't have the mic in front of them, but let me just say this, it works from a security standpoint, and, uh, it's certainly security in action because it really forces you to do that. So you were talking, how much space is required to do this simulator, but also to do the training if you use that suite next door adjacent to Technology Services?
The size of the suite, the existing suite now would accommodate our needs.
Okay, okay, all right, that's future thinking. I, I think that's a conversation that's certainly gonna have to continue in the future. Um, and I think with the work you've done in the area of cybersecurity and to protect our network, it's something that should not be, um, discounted, should I say, and taken for granted. Well, okay, all right, I, I, I just wanted to get, Commissioner, you've experienced that with you having to change your password because you can't access it?
Yes. And actually, I brought my computer in this week to be, to, because they did extend the time, but when I pushed change password, it came up with this, you're not, you couldn't, wouldn't take me to the page where you're supposed to change it, so.
Yes.
You have exceeded the deadline.
Right.
It's still not changed.
Yes. So basically, an employee should have the option on their computer, a tab to change their passwords. However, if they have exceeded all of the requests for an employee to change their password, and at that point, if they're completely locked out with the exception of you all, because we know who you are, but with AI now, it could be someone else pretending to be you by, uh, copying your voice. So taking all of those things into consideration, an employee has to come into Technology Services Department so we can actually see the employee, see their ID, and if so, confirm with their employing department in our elected office to ensure that they still work for the county.
You, you, okay, guys, you know, we got a, a gold standard here in Rockdale. No other technology services county in the state of Georgia, certainly the metro region, is doing it the way, uh, Director Moore Jackson and her team, uh, this is, that's the way it should be done, and you're doing it with a class act. Uh, yeah, those little inconveniences, and even what you said about AI, which is so popular and all over the place, they've joined forces with the hackers. In fact, they are the hackers, that's, those bad actors doing all that stuff, but listen, we could talk all day about it. You run a, 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 an ironclad operation in terms of making sure that we're protected. Commissioner Washington, you've been quiet in this space, I would have expected to hear something from you. Uh, are you locked out too?
I've had my days of going over to Technology Services or calling Margaret saying, I don't know what happened, I can't get in, and they look it up, and sure enough, I have exceeded all of my deadlines that have been extended, so I had to go over and get my password reset. So I'm trying to, to, to not, uh, I'm trying to, 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 to not tell that story, which is why I was quiet. Yes, yes, I have been in the hot seat many times.
You, you've had to talk to the cyber police.
Just about every time it has happened, so yes, but I appreciate it.
But thank you for sharing that, though, because that way, the employees know that we're not just singling out any individual. The rule is the rule, and it's across the board. So thank you very, very much for all three of you sharing that, so that way, hopefully all employees listening and all elected offices listening realize we're not doing, it's nothing personal, this is strictly a security measure for the county.
But then you're with somebody like Executive Director Holmes, who'll get the notification, and she's like, oh, it's time to change my password, let me think, oh, okay, well, I'm gonna do, oh, okay, all right, I'm with you now, and you're like, what in the world did I just see? Which is happening.
Well, you, what you said, uh, Director Moore Jackson, is that, um, technology services don't discriminate.
No, we do not.
Whether you the entry-level employee or the chairman of a superior court judge, if you have access to this network and you've not complied according to the regulation, you will be shut down.
Yes, yes, sir. And one thing to also, to seriously drive home there, is the key, the main targets in any government are the elected officials.
Principals, yeah.
Yes, and the department heads, the managers, the supervisors, those are the people, because you all have the access to the most, most data, and that's what the hackers are after.
Right.
So we have to make sure that we're doing everything we can to specifically keep you guys' accounts safe.
All right, we, let's move on, I don't want to give these hackers too much credit.
On this last, on this last, on this slide here for the last item, one item we still need to cover is the multi-gig cabling. It falls under item number six, six there, but basically, the multi-gig cabling throughout the county currently, there's some CAT 3A cabling still in the, throughout the county, and it needs to be replaced. We, um, need to, the industry standard is, um, 6E, we need to make sure that all of the cabling throughout the county is completely up to date. This will make the data exchanges quicker, the bandwidth alignment more efficient, thus making all the, um, employees more productive, and it'll help to make the county computer end-users more effective and efficient all the way around. Next slide, please. This page provides an overall summary of the capital improvement projects for the next five years for TSD with the funding for the proposed projects distributed over a five-year period. Earlier today, when I was listening to the, um, a previous budget hearing for another department, you stated saving time equals saving lives. By supporting this budget request, this will enable TSD to support Rockdale County's public safety and all departments and all elected officials, enabling them to save lives and provide services to all of Rockdale County. Next slide, please. Thank you for the opportunity to present this budget request. Thank you for your attention and your support for the county's technology programs. We understand that without security, there will be no business, and without business, there will be no need for security. In technology services, we work to find the medium. Thank you.
Commissioner Washington, any questions for the Director?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you.
I do have a, a comment, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go right ahead.
Once again, this is another department that, from where we started.
Oh, yeah.
In 2017, to where we are now, is like a, a completely different animal, and, and I will say, I didn't even realize that once we got, once we got to a certain level, there's no real going back to, you know, monetarily or, or technology, because it's all gonna, everything, you have to build on everything. So once we made this budget, something that was sustainable, I was thinking, well, we just cut the budget and move that money somewhere else. You can't do that because even right now, as we speak, the technology is.
Evolving.
Evolving, and surpasses all my, um, intellectual capabilities almost. So I appreciate all of the work that you have done to make sure that we have the latest and greatest, and I tell people all the time, there have been people that come up to me asking if they, if I would introduce them to Margaret Moore Jackson, and I'm like, no. Y'all can't meet her, y'all can't have her, no ma'am, no sir.
She's done that in front of me, and then grabbed me and said, come on.
So y'all know I'm telling the truth, but, um, that, um, that you have done an amazing job here and your staff, and then even though, um, I was, I, I was completely honest and said that I've been in the technology services hot seat, they all do, even though I need accommodations, they all do it with a smile, and I don't feel like I am, um, in trouble, but I know I, I, I feel like I'm in trouble, but they don't make me feel bad. So great customer service always, so I appreciate everything that you've done for that department.
Commissioner Williams?
I think Commissioner Washington just said it all. Um, I, customer service is fabulous. I've had, I, I think it was Deborah, who came out to my house one time to do something on my laptop, um, so I appreciate that, and, um, I'll try to be better at getting, changing my password.
We'll go to the Tony Holmes School of Passport Setting.
The problem is, you can't change it from home, and my laptop is at home with me. I have to remember to bring it into the office, so.
Director Moore Jackson, you are the Serena Williams of technology services.
Wow.
No doubt.
Thank you.
You, the passion and the level of seriousness that you have about the work that you do, uh, is second to none, and, and, and I agree with Commissioner Washington. Uh, I ain't telling nobody about the gem that we have in you and your team here in Rockdale County, because we're not gonna help give you away or give any of them away. We're already challenged trying to compete with folks as it is to bring in, uh, super talent, but we certainly, and she's right, and I've been here for a few minutes, and, uh, I've seen over the years how we've come a long way in technology services, and every time I think Executive Director Relich about technology services, I always go back to that picture of the wires that were hanging in the old courthouse, uh.
Well, don't you remember?
That's all discombobulated, and it was a part of the network, and you got us straight, and you got us up to date into modern times, so thank you so much for your leadership, thank you for so much for taking your work very seriously, and make, and holding us, as she said, holding all of us accountable, uh, to, um, making sure that we are in compliance and protecting our network. Uh, I mean, you think about all of what continues to happen, there's never an if, there's always a when, and they've hit us before, chances are, we're probably gonna get hit again, but how we respond to that matters a lot. And then the last thing I want to make sure I point out, as Director, uh, Moore Jackson referenced, her team, Deputy Director May and the rest of the team, uh, she talked about the transition for the Task Commissioners Office. At 2:00 AM in the morning, they were out working, literally, and then at 8:00 AM, they were back on the job. Let's give it up for Director Moore Jackson and her entire team. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, you know, um, come on up, Madam CFO, um, you, uh, once again, you and your team, as I stated earlier, have knocked the ball out of the park, and this has been, I believe, a very, another commissioner, uh, educational, informative, uh, budget hearing. We've heard from a good number of folks, and for all the folks that didn't come before this podium in this setting, we've heard from them, and we continue to hear from them internally as we make decisions to move Rockdale County forward. Uh, we've got a, every year, uh, another hard task before us to make decisions on how much and who, and, uh, it's, it's, it's not easy, because if it was easy, anybody would be doing this. Uh, so I think because, you know, we make it look easy, uh, sometimes during the course of the year.
They make it look easy.
They make it look real easy because we're nothing without them. They're the technicians that serve at a very high level to make sure that we, as commissioners and a county, look like the county that we are, the absolute best county in the state of Georgia. Thank you. Uh, are there any closing remarks? Uh, I, I think you have, you're flanked by two of your tip-top people, and I don't want to leave without you shining a light on them.
I definitely want to say thank you. Uh, thank you to Deputy CFO, Narendra Bardwaj, our Budget Manager, Bill Vaughn, and I think our Budget Analyst, Anethia Mayer.
Yes, she is. Let's give all three of them a round of applause, absolutely.
They've done an amazing job, even to the last minute. We try to make everything as seamless as possible, and it has been challenging, but you know, it's one of the things we do.
So what can we expect next coming from finance? We've gone through this process, Madam CFO, you're in charge of all of this, what's next on the horizon as we make our way to December to balance, close with a balanced budget this year?
So within those binders, there are proposals from each and every department, constitutional officer, and elected official, and as you said, these are proposals, these are the presentations and budget requests that they have to make their department, get, give their department, excuse me, the ability to be the best that they can be. And of course, we have to look at the numbers, we have to really hone in, because we know budgetarily, we can't make everything possible, and that's gonna be tough. So we'll be looking at the numbers, putting things together, we will be making recommended changes and recommended budget, um, for the BOC to look at, as well as take into consideration any recommendations that the Board of Commissioners have for us as well, um, and we'll move forward from there.
Executive Director Relich, any comments coming from you? This is the opening of a public meeting, one fortunate opportunity to chime in on things that we may need to be aware of.
Right, absolutely. So what will happen, um, after what this CFO explained is that the CFO will work with the chairman to put together the chairman's budget, which will be presented to the commissioners. And then we will go to our budget public hearing in October, and then you will have an ordinance formed to have your first reading in November and second reading and adoption in December.
Chief Sanders?
I have nothing to add, except to thank you to the Finniest Department, also Shannon's here, helping in for lunch as well.
Yeah, y'all, that's right, Shannon's been the anchor, the skipper over there. Give it up for Shannon, y'all, give her a round of applause. I don't want to forget Shannon over there, and I certainly do appreciate our deputy being here with us to make sure that this meeting was safe and secure, but also want to make sure, I give a, a, a big shout out and close out to our Public Relations Department, they received a lot of feedback about streaming and making sure that the public who is not in this live audience was able to, uh, view and listen and watch, and as we've been challenged with a few little technology glitches along the way, for the most part, I believe over 80% of this has been broadcast, and we've been able to meet the demand, the demand of our citizens. Give it up for PR and the work that they do, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you. This concludes the 2024 budget hearings. This meeting is concluded adjourned.